Hello, this is David Gordon Koch reporting from Moncton for the NB Media Co-op. Homelessness and the housing crisis were at the top of the agenda during the first Moncton City Council meeting of the year on Monday, January 20th. City councillors heard about initiatives meant to help poor and homeless people during the public presentations on Monday after a heavy snowfall covered the city and temperatures dropped to deadly levels of cold. I spoke to a homeless person in downtown Moncton while recording video for this report. He told me that he's experiencing frostbite requiring the amputation of one of his toes among other health issues. He said that he sometimes sleeps at local shelters, but when he does, he falls victim to theft. The NB Media Co-op agreed not to identify him because he felt so embarrassed about his circumstances after recently being evicted from his home, a story that underlines the dangers of homelessness and the stigma that comes with it. Projects that city councillors heard about on Monday included a volunteer-run organisation behind a new housing project for women struggling with poverty. They're looking for more financial support to continue their work. Housing for Life, a nonprofit organisation that formed in 2023, is administered by a group of volunteers including longtime anti-poverty activist Oria Cormier, who has worked extensively with the NB Common Front for Social Justice. Cormier said Housing for Life is building what she described as "modest affordable housing units for single mothers and their children along with senior women," two groups that face some of the highest rates of poverty in Canada. What does "affordable" mean? Speaking to the NB Media Co-op, she explained that rent will be subsidised by the Department of Social Development with tenants paying 30% of their social assistance cheque. She said that that works out to about $250 or $300 per month. Cormier, who is a Catholic nun and former Université de Moncton professor, said the housing initiative was motivated by Christian values. However, the housing project itself will not involve religious programming. City councillors also heard from Deborah Thompson, the new executive director of the Salvos Clinic, which provides medical services and other social services to people struggling with issues such as homelessness and drug addiction. In 2023, the clinic was forced to suspend operations after being evicted from its downtown location at 22 Church Street. It now has a clinic on Mountain Road with 17 staff and a housing and social services branch on St George Street with 24 staff. The group has been busy. In 2023-24, nurse practitioners with the Salvos Clinic provided services to 660 individuals, she said. They hope to eventually put all the services under one roof. City councillors also observed a moment of silence for the dozens of people in Moncton who died last year while homeless precariously housed or struggling with drug addiction. Last year's official death toll was 47, said Andrea Anne, community coordinator for the Greater Moncton Homelessness Steering Committee. Also during the council meeting, Kodiak Regional RCMP Superintendent Benoit Jollette spoke about the Out of the Cold Shelter on St George Street in Moncton. He said police have seen fewer calls for service in the surrounding area ever since the shelter opened, but more calls for service at the shelter itself. During the council meeting, there was also a separate presentation by Suzanne Trites, a representative for the International Christian Embassy Jerusalem, a pro-Israel group. She noted that Monday, January 28th marks the 80th anniversary of the liberation of the Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration and extermination camp. She requested that City Hall and other locations around the city be lit up in blue as part of the commemorations. Stay tuned for uncut footage from this week's Moncton City Council meeting and follow all of our news and commentary at nbmediacoop.org.
For today's presentation, there actually will be no slides. I'm just going to say a few words and a reading of the names. So, good afternoon, your worship, Mayor Don Arnold, as well as council. Thank you for the opportunity again to come in front of you and speak today on behalf of the Greater Moncton Homeless Steering Committee. Today, we come together to honour and remember the 47 individuals we've lost in 2024. These are not just names on a list. They were cherished friends, loved family members, and members of our community, each with their own stories, dreams, and connections to others. As we read their names, let us reflect not only on the profound challenges they faced, but also the humanity they shared. May we hold their memories close, not just as a reminder of the struggles they endured by the struggles of their friends that are still enduring those, but also a call to action to build a community rooted in compassion, dignity, and support for all. May their lives inspire us to work together toward meaningful change. Ryan W., Joseph M., Jeffrey T., Gary M., Marc Andre G., Brittany A., Victor S., Mathieu B., Jenny L., Miguel P., Anthony G., Tabitha N., Aaron S., Lucas P., Mariah Z., Jamie M., John Jr. R., Jason B., Wayne L., Dinny A., Tanya G., Bradley D., Alexander B., Natalie L., Jesse S., Benjamin B., Vassil W., John G., Sarah N., Brody M., Terry O., Stephen D., Whitney T., Richard G., Fiona S., Tina G., Gilianno D., Rodney F., Richard E., Michael M., Jonathan G., Mike F., Dale G., Arthur M., Brody L., Tim H., and Patricia H. I would ask that we take a moment of silence for one minute in remembrance of them. The ages of these individuals ranged from 23 years old to 70 that we have lost in our community in 2024. Thank you. Thank you, Andrea.
The next presentation is a presentation from Housing for Life Inc. and it will be given by Oria Cormier.
Can we bring up the PowerPoint presentation?
This evening, I would like to describe a project that we've organised. It's called Housing for Life. This is a nonprofit organisation. It was incorporated with the province in 2023. It is also recognised by CRA. Our project has something special about it. It was born out of the consensus between seven citizens that really wanted to get involved to create affordable housing. These people are... Please give me a second, I need to move my slides forwards. You just need to hit the screen. So, these people are Nicolas Caldera, Richard Saintil, Isabelle Lavoy, Miss Dionne, me, Alphonse Dionne, and Marieva Godet. So, what inspired us? It was a phrase by Margaret Mead that says, "Never doubt that a small group of committed people can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has." So, our objective is to reduce poverty by providing affordable housing to women and to their children who are living in poverty. We thought to build comfortable, modest units with rents that are below market rates and they're also environmentally friendly. So, there's a nice intergenerational component to this project. We want to bring together single mothers along with older women and therefore connections can be built between renters and then a network of help will naturally emerge. Here is an overview. We're on the Moncton Centre on Pine, on a 10,000 square foot lot, near bus routes, a pharmacy, a school, corner stores, a community garden, and Victoria Park. We wanted to grant this project, we wanted to devote this project to God and the administrators of the project buried medallions of Mary on the four corners of the lot. Four Corners Design Studio did the design of the building. This is a two-storey building. It will have eight units with one bedrooms and seven two-bedroom units. There will be a common room to foster community spirit. The foundation was built in November. We chose Donna Ferguson as the person to build our building. She has been in this industry for 35 years and she owns, she builds Community for Life. She is someone who is socially minded, who wants to reduce poverty among women and children. The total cost of the project is $3.2 million and in the table you see here, you can see that $1.227 million will be provided by Housing New Brunswick. In the orange side, you can see all of the donations that were given by the public because they resonate with the quality of the project that we're building. I'd like to thank the city of Moncton, who will give us $320,000. This money will help us so much. We also received funding from the Green Fund. We want our building to be eco-friendly and they granted us $99,000. There will be more funding and we think that we might not even need to have a mortgage because we have a firm that is co-led by Aleah Landry from Landale Inc. and from Jeremy Nelson from Plasmo Louisbourg. And this includes 10 other eminent members. Our goal is to raise $700,000. So, in closing, our group Housing for Life is managed by volunteers who are seeking to reduce poverty. 15 tenants will be chosen by the Social Development Department and they will have access to affordable housing around at the end of November this year. Members of the Board of Administration, the Board of Directors are very engaged and they would like to pursue another construction project for affordable housing. Thank you. Thank you, Oria.
Presentation update on Salvos Clinic by Deborah Thompson, or Thompson, Executive Director. Could I just get you to press your microphone? There you go. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. This is my first opportunity to address you, so I'm very excited. I've also just come from the dentist, so I'm still half-frozen. So, I am not aware of the last time Salvos Clinic has had an opportunity to address council and I am just completing my first three months, so thank you for celebrating my probation together. I am the new executive director of Salvos Clinic and I wanted to provide you with just a short presentation on a little bit of history of Salvos, assuming that we can walk that journey together. So, Salvos Clinic is a community clinic founded in 2007 in Moncton and was met, was really brought together by Dr Kraus to meet a growing and complex need of vulnerable populations in our Moncton area. And in 2014, it became registered as a charity. The mission of the organisation is to provide access to primary healthcare, housing supports, and service navigation to those in our community who are not surviving and experiencing barriers related to homelessness, poverty, mental health, and substance use. Salvos proved last year to be an organisation that was adaptive and flexible during a period where they had to make a large move from Church Street location where they were since 2007 to the two most current locations. So, the clinical arm, the Horizon Health part of our organisation, is on 1116 Mountain Road, where we have approximately 17 staff caring for the needs of not only the homeless, but also those who are living with poverty and/or those who do not have a family physician. And you can well imagine, they're very busy. We at the housing side and social services support side of the organisation are on 272 St George, where we have now approximately 24 staff working with about 160 clients. We are governed by a board of directors and you'll see the names up there. You will recognise most of these people, I would think, and lovely group of people that I am very proud to work with, some of our community partners. We would very much like to honour and thank the city of Moncton for all the work that they have done and continue to do with our bus and with also ongoing funding. We also work with Horizon Health Network, Vitalité, United Way of Moncton, Social Development, Housing New Brunswick, and our local shelters and many, many other organisations. We're also a proud member of the Greater Moncton Homeless Steering Committee. I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes here. This is a very quick conservative snapshot of what Salvos Clinic has done in the last year or so. We have worked with, at the clinic side, approximately 660, nurse practitioners saw 660 unique individuals, registered nurses saw over 517, LPNs saw over 139, and social workers 104. And these are very conservative estimates, and that's just on the clinic side. From the social services side, we work with every day of approximately 160 of the most highest acuity in our community. And these are people who are housed, who still need everyday care to make sure that they're going to stay housed and be successful in their everyday life. We also have a number of navigators who are the ones that go into the areas of encampments or along the city streets to find Joe, who may be needed for documentation or for an appointment, who's not housed. So, we have amazing staff who will go out of their way morning, night, and weekend to make sure that the most vulnerable of our community are not left alone and we work with them on a daily basis. Looking into the future, Salvos is looking at ways that we can bring our two sides of our business back together under the same roof. There's a couple of opportunities coming down the road. These are early days, but we hope to be able to provide you with an update when that happens. It is the will of the people, the community, I believe, the city, and also the province to make sure that we can provide the best support possible for the people that we work with and we hope to be able to do that under one roof. Would like to thank you all for your time and I look forward to coming back to make another presentation on the update of Salvos Clinic. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Deborah.
Our final presentation is a two-minute presentation by Susan Trites.
Good afternoon. The bar seems to be set very high today in terms of presentations. Good afternoon, Mayor Arnold and council. My name is Suzanne Trites. I am the New Brunswick representative of the International Christian Embassy Jerusalem Canada team. Next Monday, January 28th, is a very significant day for the Jewish people around the world. It represents the liberation of the German Nazi Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration and extermination camp. This year especially, the 80th anniversary of that incredible liberation. Our Canadian government will be taking this opportunity to remember the victims of the atrocities of the Holocaust and reflect on the dangers of antisemitism. Locally, shared with me by Frances, the president of the local synagogue, we had two precious people liberated from Auschwitz. Sulamit in April of 2013 passed away and Joseph Cohen in November of 2020 were both in Auschwitz. Joseph was 16 and Sulamit was a year or two older, younger, sorry, and met in January 1945. They both met also after the war in England. They fell in love and married in 1948. They didn't know each other before the war, although they lived on the same street in Warsaw. Later, they moved to Canada, settled in Moncton, New Brunswick in 1958, and had two children. Joseph had a successful curtain business on High Street. They are both buried in the Jewish cemetery. They are a blessed memory, as the Jewish people say of the departed. Liberation of the Jewish people is very significant this year, especially after witnessing the release of the three very precious young Jewish ladies, Romi, Emily, and Iran, just 24 hours ago, who had been kept in captivity for over 470 very long days in Gaza. Liberation is indeed a very precious word to the Jewish people today. I have requested City Hall, Avenue Centre, and Downing Street be lit in blue on this sobering and sacred day, memorialising the victims of the Holocaust and more personally showing honour of the people of our local Jewish community. I've requested that for next Monday. I'm also requesting a post be published next Monday on the City of Moncton Facebook page to bring awareness to the Greater Moncton communities as the significance of these three locations being lit in blue. Frances has given me permission to write up a little paragraph in both official languages to be posted on the Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. At this time, are there any questions from council? First up, councillor LeBlanc.
This isn't a question. I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for all of the work that you do for people who are unhoused in the community. And Ms Thompson and Oria Cormier, please continue what you're doing. I respect what you're doing tremendously and it's extremely important for the city of Moncton. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Terry O.
Merci, Madame Lamère.
Thank you, your worship. I share the same sentiment as my colleague councillor LeBlanc. Thank you to all of you. I do have a question. I was extremely touched by the list of people that you presented to us. Thank you for reminding us that these people are people just like us. They are members of the community. It is so easy to forget. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Sister Oria, thank you for what you do. I have a question for you about your project. Is your project one of a kind in the Moncton region? Do we have other housing for single mothers that also bring together senior women? Is this something that is innovative? Can you use the microphone, please? Just press on the button. Yes, there are groups that are doing excellent work. I'm thinking of Rising Tides that does a lot of work. Our group is unique in the sense that it seeks to help people who are waiting for subsidised housing. We looked into the data and we found that single mothers are very high on the list and women who live alone, who are seniors, are also living under the poverty line in large numbers. So, what's also unique about us is that we are a group of regular people who have raised the awareness of getting involved in solving our problems and the one we chose to tackle was housing. Another thing that is unique about us is thanks to the Green Fund, we are going to be building a particularly energy-efficient building. And so, I'd like to thank Charles Legere for helping us, that he was able to help us secure about $100,000 to fund this project. So, thank you, Charles. Thank you. Thank you, Sister Oria, and thank you to your whole team that's here. Thank you. Thank you, your worship. To your group, Sister Oria, thank you. Thank you for investing in this part of the city. It's a little bit fragile these days. It's a little rundown, a little forgotten, but with a beautiful project like yours, it's something that could be a turning point for this part of town. So, thank you for daring to invest in that part of the city. Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Deborah, could you come up for one second? I just wanted to, I think you touched on it again, and great work by Salvos, but the navigator's role to me is, that jumped right off the page because we, I think everyone on council at some point or another, and yourself, we've talked to people on the street, whether casual conversation, we went into people and they refuse to go to a clinic, they refuse to go to a shelter. Where are they going at night? We don't know. Where do they sequester, if you will? The navigators have to go out and find these people and actually get them to engage in this amazing work. Could you expand a little more on the navigator for us?
Yeah, I hope to give that answer some justice. I mean, it depends on the time of year, right? If it's spring, summer, and fall, they're staying where they stay. And our navigators are people that usually have lived experience, so they already have a pre-existing relationship, so they'll go to them and they will build up that trust and rapport and it takes time. It can take almost a year to really get somebody to trust you. In the wintertime, hopefully, they'll come into one of our emergency shelters and hopefully by then, we have a little bit of more of a response for them. We have been making some headway with housing, but it's still a challenge, as everyone knows. So, really, what we do is we just try to bring home to them as much as possible and build that respect, build that trust. We will get through multiple layers of funding, opportunities to take them in, get them a meal, do their paperwork while they're having a meal, you know, have that kind of trust done. People go out of their way in this community and truly, I see it in all respects, faith community, organisations, and just the regular people on the street. And I've heard of Mayor Arnold going and narkanning people too, I believe. But people, oh, okay, over here, people doing the best for folk, you know, and we meet them where they're at and we truly do believe that we have to meet them where they're at. Everybody has a journey. Nobody in their infancy said that they wanted to grow up and be homeless. They wanted to grow up and be something. And some of them have accomplished great things in their life, but life happens.
How many navigators, Deborah, would there be?
Right now, we only have two.
Two.
Amazing young people, amazing young people. One of our navigators is a young female. She, good wind would blow her down the street, but she's got the heart of a lion. We're hoping to get another one on board starting in the new fiscal year.
That's great because even though with this three-day call stamp we're having, we still see people surviving. That's great, because even though with this three day cold snap we're having, we still see people surviving and enduring these temperatures. They're not in, they're not overnighting anywhere is the sad part. And this is where that Salva's comes in to make a key contribution. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Merci, Madame Madas. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Legere.
Merci, Madame La Merre, et merci, Sarah D. A.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Sister Aria. And certainly, you are the example of a person who is really remarkable. You are an involved member of the community and the Moncton City Council is delighted to support you in your endeavors. I do hope that over the coming years, we will be able to show as much energy as you do. You are here to meet specific needs in the community in relation to waiting lists for housing for the population need. And if we can support you even more, we will be very pleased to do so. Without you and other community organizations, we would not be able to do that. So I would like to extend our warmest thanks to you, Sister Aria. I think you create excellent partnerships. Very glad to see that Jeremy's involved as well as the wider community. Thank you so much for your commitment, for your good work and for what you do on a daily basis in Moncton. Thank you.
But a real heartfelt thank you to all of our presenters tonight who are doing such important work in our community. It is incredibly appreciated and how fortunate are we to live in a community that has such caring individuals. So thank you very much.
Next would be administration presentation.
Administration presentation. Tonight, we have an update from the RCMP. With the superintendent of the Kodiak Regional Policing Authority, Benoit Gillette.
Bon après-midi, tout le monde. Good afternoon, everybody.
Afternoon, everyone.
Wish everybody a happy new year. But what I wish is that I'd like to wish Moncton Council, city staff and all the residents of Moncton a happy and prosperous twenty twenty five. I look forward to working with Moncton Council and everybody that's involved in public safety in twenty twenty five in this very exciting year, specifically for us as we continue to grow. I'll jump right in on some of the updates since I last reported to council before the Christmas holidays. So December seventeenth, I joined, there was actually fifteen of us, members from community policing, patrol, crime reduction unit, general investigation section, everyone, all hands on deck for a volunteer effort at Beaver Brook School. We served the total of five hundred lunches to all the kids and staff, students at the school. I'd like to specifically thank the dedicated volunteers that prepared the meals at the Saint Philip's Church for the amazing work and for everyone at Beaver Brook School for sharing in the holiday cheer. For those that aren't aware, this is, I think it was year twenty this year that we've had a chance to bring these meals to the students at Beaver Brook School. And a lot of work goes into it specifically for the volunteers that were making the meals. A little bit, I guess, apropos what was just shared regarding the individuals who are living rough in our community and suffering from social issues. So I'd like to report to councils, since the opening of the Out of the Cold Shelter, Kodiak RCMP has been meeting up to three times a week with our community partners in the downtown and those that work tirelessly on social issues. And since the Out of the Cold Portion has opened, we have seen a reduction in calls for service in the surrounding areas and involving the individuals that are at most risk dealing with social issues. We have seen a larger number of calls at the shelter because there's a larger population of individuals that are staying there. But what I'd like to advise council is that unfortunately, there's still roughly thirty beds approximately every night that are still empty. So that shows that we still have tremendous work to do with our community organizations, community policing unit and all the organizations that are involved with helping individuals who are suffering, suffering from various social issues. Next, regarding our crime reduction unit. Our, our members on the crime reduction unit have been working on a targeted drug enforcement initiative in partnership with the Federal Serious and Organized Crime Section since the beginning of the new year. I'll be able to provide further details on this, on the operation and the results in my next appearances at Moncton Council. A couple of the highlights since I last reported regarding our general investigation section. Speaking of the Out of the Cold Shelter, one specific incident on December, mid-December, just before the holidays, we responded to an incident where an individual had injured another with a knife. Following the investigation into the matter, the suspect was charged, entered a guilty plea and was sentenced on January eighth. Really quick turnaround on this file, approximately a month. And the individual was sentenced to two years federal jail time for that incident. On December twenty eighth, we responded to two separate incidents revolving the same young offender. This is an individual that we've been dealing with nonstop over the last two, three years, property crime, violent offenses. Unfortunately, the individual has a short period of incarceration conditions, but continues the same negative behavior as soon as he's released. And this happened on December twenty eighth, an attempted robbery on Highfield Street. However, the individual is unsuccessful in robbing the individual. It spilled over on Mountain Road. Another attempt of a robbery in a business and our members arrived within minutes of the, of that call coming in. And we were able to take custody of the young person. And we will charge this individual to the extent of the law. However, as I mentioned in the past, often young offenders specifically are released just based on various case laws and, and sections of the Criminal Code regarding young offenders. On January eleventh, our Kodiak Patrol members responded to a complaint of another violent offense at a business located on John Street. Were a male, a male suspect entered the business and brandished a knife and threatened the employees. He was unsuccessful in obtaining the money or other items and left just minutes before police arrived. And our general investigation section has taken care of that file. And the file is progressing quite well and will be able to identify the suspect shortly. Another, another file I'd like to update council on, it's regarding the former teacher in the area, Monsieur Meya, who was charged with various sexual type offenses, historic sexual assaults. So since January sixth, practically our entire general investigation section team has been in court as well as other specialists in the RCMP, whether it's forensic identification and truth verification, major crime. And the trial's been ongoing since January sixth and it should end this week. What I'd like to mention is specifically to thank the victims and the witnesses and also our members at Kodiak for the tireless work. If council remembers initially, there was only a few victims that had come forward. And in, thanks to a media release, multiple more victims came forward. And again, I just pray that the, the victims have some sort of closure at the end of this trial and, and whether, and we'll see what sentencing will bring. Regarding our patrol section, on December thirty first, at about nine seventeen AM, our members of our patrol team and the Moncton Fire Department and ambulance in New Brunswick responded to a report of a vehicle submerged in the river next to Church Street and Clement Cormier Street in Moncton. A thirty-three year old man and a twenty-four year old man were found deceased inside the vehicle. As you can imagine, various specialized units and members attended the scene, including the RCMP's traffic reconstructionists, a member of the New Brunswick Coroner's Office and our investigators from our general investigation section. The investigation is ongoing, however, foul play is not suspected at this time. A little bit later that morning, approximately an hour and a half later, members of patrol section responded to another collision, this one involving a pedestrian near a business on Mountain Road. The pedestrian was transported to hospital with serious injuries. The driver and the sole occupant of the vehicle was not injured. And a few days later, the victim, a sixty year old woman from Moncton, died as a result of her injuries. So I'd just like to share my condolences and sympathies for the families of these three individuals who unfortunately lost their lives here in our area on December thirty first. Between January first and the ninth of January, Southeast District RCMP responded to a total of four robberies in various locations outside of the tri-community, specifically in Monroe-Cook and Sackville. Through the investigation, a primary suspect was identified. And on January tenth, the suspect was located in the Salisbury area. And the reason I advise, my advising council about this is that it spilled over into the Moncton area. The suspect ended up coming to the Moncton North area near the casino. And due to the violence of the offender and the offenses that he had committed, we requested the help of the emergency response team. And they deployed to the area and took a forty-five year old man from Otobu Jagann and a forty-one year old woman from Moncton into custody. Kodiak RCMP assisted with the operation, took custody of the two prisoners and escorted them to our office. And we've continued to work with Southeast District and assisting them with those files. Finally, regarding our patrol section on January twelfth, one of our members was just simply going from call to call and noticed a vehicle that was driving erratically here in town in Moncton. The vehicle was located, pulled over. Male and a female were taken into custody based on seeing illegal items in the backseat. We kept the vehicle and executed a search warrant a few days later. Over three kilograms of unstamped and illicit cannabis, various weapons and an amount of fentanyl were seized. And really great work by one of our junior members just out there being proactive and looking for various things that are going on in our community. And the last thing that I'll share is today, I had the pleasure of hosting newly minted Minister of Public Safety for New Brunswick, Monsieur Rabagouvin, at Kodiak RCMP. He wanted to come and see what Kodiak RCMP was all about. I had a chance to show him our current building and speak about the new building, speak to various employees. And then he, he got in a car with me and we went on the road and responded to some calls for service and assisted some of our members on our road. So I look forward to continuing to work with him and his team on the various issues that are affecting public safety here in the tri-community. Available for any question?
Terrific. Thank you, Counselor Bourgeois.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Gillette. First of all, thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciate the level of detail. Second of all, happy new year to you too. I wish that twenty twenty five sees our crime rate go down so that it is not third highest in the country in Moncton. And we'll see, hopefully in twenty twenty six, it gets even better. But I cannot help from expressing my concern. I know you're very aware of that. People, especially people from Ward Two, but across the municipality, people are tired of being victims of various breaks and enters and any crime like this. So I'm just here to relay their message. I thank you very much for this. And I thank you, Counselor Bourgeois. We are also getting tired of having to respond constantly to the same incidents because of the same people. So we are trying to change a number of things in twenty twenty five. And that's one of our commitments for the new year to improve the quality of life of citizens in Moncton and also for us to improve our, I don't know the French term, but our solvability rate. We do an excellent work, but we need to increase results for property crime. Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Your Worship and Happy New Year Superintendent and to all the members. I just got a couple of things. A few years ago, Counselor Crosman and I went to a CRPA meeting and I also spoke to Inspector White when, when he was at one of our meetings regarding the crime map and the way they break down the stats. I just have one up here for in December and it's, it used to have the break and enters to be breaking into residence, breaking into business and other. But now they, for this last, I'd say, six months or more, they've lapped it all into one. So when I look at break and enters now for Moncton, it has forty-five break and enters for a certain time limit. But it doesn't, we don't know if it's break and enter, if it's more that we should be more closely watching for break and enters into homes or into businesses or in others. So I'm just wondering, is that, would that be your stats that you're putting out or is that something that we have to go to the CRPA for?
No, that, that would be us. And it's, I know it's changed, like I've been here for over five years and the, the stats and how it's portrayed has changed various times. And again, that's the type of thing that we're always up for, for conversations and because we want to be accountable to you and to show exactly what's going on in the community.
So I was just wondering why it was changed.
Was there? Yeah, I don't have the answer right now as to why, but it's something that I can easily check.
Okay, so it would be really nice though to be able to say that it's a house, a business or other, being a shed or something. My next question was, is during the budget, we, we spoke about the seventeen and you needed certain amount of new members for plainclothes because there was, we talked about the clearance rate. Do we, do you know what the off, off the top, what your clearance rate was for last year?
No, not off the top of my head.
Okay. I'm just wondering if you could send that to us. And, and I, and I say why is because when we get them, we'll have something to compare to.
Yeah.
Like, so if it was like, say thirty, you know, if we get seventeen new people, is it making a difference?
Yeah, and no, it's a good point, Counselor Butler. And that's exactly, we have those statistics for all the years past. And that's exactly is our goal is that, and it's similar to comments in the past from Counselor Bourgeois as well too, is that what are we getting for this? What are we going to be getting for the invested? And that's exactly our goal is to be able to show a solvability rate, whether it's a person crime or a property crime. And then these added resources, that is our, that is our commitment to be able to increase the solvability rate. So those are all, those are all information and stats that are going to be shared. Absolutely.
Fair enough. So then the KPIs will come out through.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. My last one is, is that I've been, I've been watching the news and now that we have a new, a new President of the United States and he talks about tariffs and the federal government has jumped all over the border. And Ottawa was saying regards to that they're going to need more RCMP officers on the border. So, you know, we, we know that it's been difficult to, to get members because everybody wants them across Canada, doesn't matter what province. So with this new border where they're putting more priority onto it, is that going to hinder us to get our seventeen guys in one year? Are we going to take two years, three years?
No, it won't. So just the, the little that I know about it, it's, it's a real, reallocation of federal resources. So Kodiak RCMP members are ninety, ten split. So we're considered municipal resources, provincial. But there's a whole gamut of investigators across the country that are hundred percent paid federal, federal resources. So I already know, I have friends that work in Ottawa and other provinces that their day job is as a investigator on whatever section in Ottawa. They're being redeployed to the border. So, and we, we also have those various sections here across New Brunswick through federal, federal policing. A lot of our, our members are being deployed to the border areas and border activities. It doesn't, there's no creation of new positions because creation of new positions, as we see here in, in our processes, it's a several months, if not years, to be able to create these new positions. So it won't affect. So it won't affect us in getting, plus J Division, RCMP, New Brunswick RCMP is mandated to, to get on these new positions. So then it's supposed to be twelve months that they, that they fill every single one of these positions. So.
So twelve, twelve months, we have our seventeen guys.
That's, that's what it, it's mandated that they're supposed to deliver within twelve months. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Worship.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Legere.
Yeah, thank you. And Happy New Year and Happy New Year to the, to your members. I was asked by a few residents to ask if I had the opportunity. And I've been noticing it as well, but on our streets, we're noticing, what's being noticed is a lot more vehicles with unreadable license plates. Not your fault, but the license plates date back to when the province issued license plates that the, the paint peeled off.
Yeah.
And then, and I've noticed an excessive number of vehicles with either front lights burnt out, rear lights burnt out. And I mean, these are, I mean, I could probably count six or seven a day just driving around town. So what type of initiatives can you guys do? I mean, I know that eventually you'll have a traffic division, but what, I mean, it almost, it's almost like lawlessness in the sense that just do whatever you want to do and, and, you know, just, it just goes on and, and I don't think it sends the right message. And I'm just wondering, are there initiatives that you can do on a, on a weekly basis? It wouldn't take long to, I mean, the, the number is striking. And if you haven't seen, I, I challenge, and is there, are there things that the general public needs to do? I mean, you can't read a license plate. Somebody runs into you and they drive away? I know, and it's not like they have a front plate that you could, because the province did away with that. So are there things that, that the general public can do and what, what, what message is that sending?
Absolutely. So a lot of questions there. I'll try to answer every one, Councilor Dazza. So the, the answer is we do it every single day. Like I've mentioned in the past, between three hundred and five hundred traffic tickets are issued every month by Kodiak RCMP. Can we be everywhere? Absolutely not. And for specifically for the peeling license plates, I think there was like a two-year stretch where the license plates were, they tested something anyways. That's an easy phone call is to say, hey, my neighbor has this or whatever. People can't be afraid of calling because when we get those phone calls or messages, we go out and we check those things. Day, daily traffic initiatives, like I mentioned before, community policing team, it's like twenty-five percent of their time is just doing traffic enforcement. And it's, it's funny that you mentioned light, plate, everything. There's over four hundred sections in the New Brunswick Motor Vehicle Act. If you can, just today, as I was driving with the minister, pulled over a bunch of cars because it's exactly like you said, Councilor Dazza. So I passed a car today that chose to just remove the snow on their windshield and it looked like an iceberg driving down Amiro and, yeah. And I don't know how they were driving and they had a brush, it's just they were in a rush. So. Those, these are type of things that we look for on a daily basis. But we're not going to wait for the installation of a traffic team if, if it does or it doesn't happen. Every member, whether they're, if they've been here for a day or if they've been here for ten years, between calls for service, it's traffic enforcement.
So is there a way to initiate a reporting that maybe, because it's, it's clear you're doing stuff.
Yeah.
But it's also clear that people don't know that.
Yeah.
Because there's just, the numbers are so high and so perhaps something that could be reported on so that, so that, so that the general public would know and, and would bring back some, some added confidence, I guess.
Yeah, why, why not just look where 2025 is, I'm just thinking outside the box with Melissa or comms person. Hey, did you know Kodiak RCMP gave four thousand five hundred tickets in 2024? It's a new year. Give us a call if you see a traffic.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Look forward to it. Thanks.
Councilor Kingston.
Merci Madame Maris. Thank you, Ben, and bonne année aussi.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Ben, and Happy New Year.
Provincially, they went to the two-year and, and in response to Councilor Legere. My own thought, and I worked in the automobile for twenty years in the private sector, is the two-year inspection.
Yeah.
It was one, so all of us in the room here had to bring our vehicles at least once a year to get that new, new sticker. If something's broken, they fixed it. The local service centers in the Moncton area provincially. And they bucked that at the time when it came out. It was a political football, as I remember, in Fredericton. But it would be good to get the one year back. I really would support that. I mean, as a, as a Monctonian and as a driver, because that leads to reduced car, car brakes or the, the lights, everything is fixed within a year at least, as opposed to the two-year now. And that's what we're seeing, I think, too, on the road is the, let's wait. I don't have to fix that right away. But to Councilor Legere's point, it's, it endangers public safety with one headlight and a series of broken accessories on the car, et cetera.
There's, that's just one of the items. There's a laundry list of various items that we need to focus on. We have a good opportunity right now. We have a new government. We have a new Minister of Public Safety. And now's the time, and we already have started, is to, we don't make the laws, we enforce them, but we can have a strong voice, whether it's the RCMP or elected officials and residents of what we'd like to see happening in the province here. So, and these things take time. And we've been advocating for various things for years and we're patiently, patiently waiting on, on some of these things.
Okay. Merci, Ben. Thank you. Merci Madame Maris.
Councilor Crossman.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Your Worship.
We did exchange the Happy New Year before coming into the rooms. I'll exchange it again. You had just talked about your comms division and getting out the idea that, you know, you're going through about three hundred or three, how many tickets a month?
Yeah, it depends. In the summertime, obviously, when roads are nicer, it's sometimes up to five hundred a month. On December, I think it was two ninety-six.
I think the citizens of Moncton would be really interested in finding out exactly how much of that funding from those tickets goes to the province. And I know you and I have talked about this a few times at the mic. And the fact that the RCMP are paid for by the tri-community civilians or the citizens of Moncton. But when these tickets are issued, the funding actually goes back to the province of New Brunswick. Is that correct or a portion of it?
To my knowledge, everything goes back to the province. Where it goes from there, I don't know.
Exactly. So I think that's something that the citizens should be very interested in seeing where that goes through. I agree with you. A new public safety minister is going to do great. And I'm thinking that I'll probably have that conversation down the road with him at some point. Just one comment, Councilor Butler had brought up the seventeen members. In addition to the seventeen members or staffing that these members need, we went through this at budget deliberations. Can you just confirm for me so that it's correct in my mind that these members are going to be part of, and I think your terminology is GIS? And, and that they're going to be plainclothes and that they're going to go out and they're going to try to bring that solvability of crime down in Greater Moncton?
Yeah, so it's yes and no. It's since we, since we've been there is initially, we, we didn't know what to call it or whatever. But since we've, we've gone through the budget deliberation, we've had time to say, okay, where do we need to throw these people to have the most impact? So it won't necessarily all be on the general investigation section. It's going to be a potential rebranding of all of our investigative services and have dedicated specified teams for specific crime, of, of, specific crime types. Like right now, our general investigation section works on everything under the sun. And we have a further investigative team that's more property crime, but can do sexual assault. So our members are being thrown left and right on whatever is the most high priority file. But now is effectively give a lane, let's just say a property crime team. Because then we'll be able to have them attack specifically property crime. And then another, whether it's a vulnerable person team, missing persons, sexual assaults, domestic violence. So then you get ownership, but you also get a continued building of, I guess, a specialty in your investigative field. So that's a long answer to say that our new positions will be investigative positions, but also our community policing team that we've had members seconded there for several years is to have more, even more presence and eliminate the secondments for patrol, to send patrol positions back on patrol where they should be.
Okay, good. Thank you, Superintendent. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions at this time. Thank you, Superintendent, for being here. Thank you for your thorough report.
Merci beaucoup. Thank you.